The Salem City Council will hold a joint public hearing with the Planning Board on Wednesday, November 30, 2022, at 6:30 PM for the purpose of discussing zoning ordinance amendments relative to accessory buildings and structures and affordable accessory dwelling units via remote participation and in-person participation in accordance with Chapter 48, Section 5 of the Massachusetts General Laws and Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on these zoning amendments. The meeting will be held in City Council Chambers, 93 Washington Street, Salem, second floor. Individuals may also participate remotely in the meeting via a remote participation platform called Zoom. Members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting may access the remote participation meeting through any one of the following ways. Enter the link found in the agenda and join the meeting, password 865788. Open the Zoom website, zoom.us/join, enter meeting webinar ID 83712771808 as directed on the webpage and click Join. Follow the on-screen instructions to join the meeting. Participants can dial a toll-free phone number at 888-475-4499 or 877-853-5257 to join the meeting. When prompted, enter meeting webinar ID 83712771808 and follow the instructions to join the meeting. The agenda for this meeting is posted on the website and listed below. SATV will be airing this meeting. A joint public hearing of the Salem City Council and the Planning Board was held remotely on Wednesday, November 30, 2022, at 6:30 PM for the purpose of discussing the following zoning ordinance amendments pursuant to Chapter 48, Section 5 of the Massachusetts General Laws. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on the proposed zoning ordinance amendment below. Number 628, zoning ordinance relative to accessory buildings and structures and affordable accessory dwelling units as follows below. In the year 2022, an ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to zoning. Section 1, amend Section 3.2.4 accessory buildings and structures by: (a) deleting the phrase with the exception of setback which shall comply with Section 3.2.4 (6) from Paragraph 5;[176.34][176.34](b) deleting Paragraph 6 in its entirety. Section 2, amend Section 3.2.8, number 5, affordable accessory dwelling units, requirements by:[187.87][187.87](a) deleting Paragraph 5B in its entirety;[191.62][191.62](b) deleting the following text from Section 5H; and at least one owner of the residence in which the affordable accessory dwelling unit is created shall reside in one of the dwelling units, either the principal or accessory unit created therein, as a principal place of residence. For the purpose of this section, the owner shall be one of or more individuals who hold title to the property or a purchase and sales agreement and for whom the dwelling shall be the primary residence as evidenced by voter registration, tax return, or other documentation demonstrating primary residence. Owner occupancy is required for an affordable accessory dwelling unit to be permitted. (c) deleting the word "water" from Section 5J; (d) inserting the word "exterior" following the word "all" in Section 5L; (e) deleting Section 5M in its entirety. Section 3, amend Section 3.2.8 by deleting in its entirety the definitions of existing detached accessory building, expanded detached accessory building, and new detached accessory building. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter. Notice of this hearing was posted November 5, 2022, at 3:15 PM and advertised in the Salem News on November 6, 2022, and November 23, 2022. Absent from the council are none. Council President Patricia Morcillo is presiding. And I will now introduce Chair Grissette from the Planning Board, who can introduce his members.
Thank you, Council President Morcillo. If we could, Elena, take a role, and we will commence the joint session.
Bill Grissette?
Present.
Kurt Reader?
Present.
Zach Counter?
Present.
Carol Hamilton?
Present.
Sarah Tarbet?
Present.
Helen Sines?
Present.
Tom Fury?
Present.
Jonathan Burke?
Present.
Josh Turriel?
Present.
He's present in chambers, if you didn't hear that.
A debate.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Elena. We are in session. President Morcillo.
Thank you. Before we start, also, I do want to mention, also in chambers tonight, we have Amanda Chiancola from the Planning Department, who will be doing a presentation. We also have the previous counselor from Ward 7, Mr. Dibble, Counselor Dibble, and, as we said, previous counselor from Ward 5, Josh Turriel, who's now on the Planning Board. Before we get started, I do want to go over a few things. This is the process. So, I kind of want to go through the process and how we got here. So, the original AADU ordinance was adopted in 2021, and at the time it was adopted, Council McCarthy submitted an order for the Planning Department to provide the council with data regarding the AADU permits and what issues had been, I guess, recorded during that time. On September 8, the Committee of the Whole met for a presentation by Ms. Chiancola, in which she provided data and information regarding the previous 12-plus months with the new AADU ordinance. From that presentation, proposed amendments were submitted to the council. Since these are zoning amendments, we are under obligation of Mass. General Law to hold meetings within a certain timeframe, and those began when the amendments were submitted. So, within 14 days of receipt of the zoning amendments, we must vote to refer to the Planning Board to schedule a joint public hearing. Then we have 65 days from the introduction to hold the joint public hearing. When the joint public hearing is closed, the Planning Board has 21 days to submit their recommendations back to the council. And the City Council has 90 days from the close of the public hearing to vote both first and second passage, if there's going to be any amendments. So, I wanted to present that as kind of a framework for how this is proceeding along and what we can expect in the next couple of months. And there were several emails sent in that this is a rushed process. It is not rushed. It's very deliberate, and it's set by Mass. General Law. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Amanda Chiancola to start her presentation.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this presentation. Maureen, could you please share the PowerPoint? And you can go to Slide 2. And the second slide just shows an overview of what I'll be presenting tonight. So, I'm going to go through the reason for the proposed amendments, and the reason is, you know, what the purpose of the current ordinance is and ensuring that we achieve that purpose. I'll also give you an overview of the permit status to date thus far, and then go through the amendments. President Morcillo provided the very technical amendments. I'm going to try to provide it in a way that's, I think, a little bit easier to understand than that's outlined in the legal ad. And so, look at exterior stairs, a bedroom restriction, the utilities on a single meter, and you see that crossed out, and I'll go through why that is. Detached structures, the owner occupancy requirement, and then turn it over to you for questions, comments, and I'm interested and eager to hear your discussion. And next slide, please. So, the purpose of the ordinance isn't changing. I just put in this up here as a reminder of what the purpose is and then why these changes are proposed. I want to reflect back at this. So, the purpose is to add affordable rental units to the housing stock to meet the needs of smaller households and make housing units available to households who might otherwise have difficulty finding housing. And a way that this is done in the ordinance, again, this isn't proposed to change, but I just want to keep in mind that the ordinance prohibits the accessory dwelling units from being rented for more than 70% of the fair market rent. So, for a studio, 70% of the fair market rent is about $1,400. A one-bedroom apartment, that's around $1,538. So, those are around the rent ranges that you would see, either that or lower, for accessory dwelling units. Next slide, please. In the permit status, since the revised ordinance was adopted in April of 2021, six building permits have been approved and two are currently under review by the building inspector. So, in over a year, we've had eight permits applied for. Now, the first change here I'm sharing with you is the exterior stairs. This really isn't a change, it's sort of housekeeping clarification, because people have asked me about this, so I just wanted to clarify it in the ordinance. The way the ordinance currently is read is all stairways to affordable accessory dwelling unit above the first floor shall be located on the rear or side of the dwelling. This is just adding the word "exterior," because we've had folks ask, well, what if it's, I go into a shared hallway? And so, that's just clarifying, you can have that front entrance in the shared hallway. Next slide, please. The bedroom restriction, I'm sorry, this is, might be a little hard to read up there. So, the current ordinance restricts affordable accessory dwelling units to no more than two bedrooms. And the reason for that is to make sure that the accessory unit is accessory to the primary structure. So, having that two-bedroom maximum is what, that's why that's in there. As you are all aware on the council and for members of the public, we went through this housing roadmap over the past year, and in that housing roadmap, we had identified that that bedroom restriction has a fair housing issue. Families with children are protected class by fair housing, and when you do things like limit bedrooms, it could have an adverse effect on families with children. And so, this is just saying, to be in compliance with fair housing, the recommendation is to remove the bedroom restriction. That said, there's a whole bunch of criteria in the ordinance that keeps it accessory to the primary unit, and I have some of them listed, which I know is really hard to read. I have tiny words as well here. The affordable accessory dwelling unit shall not contain in excess of 900 square feet. It cannot exceed 50% of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling. It has to be clearly subordinate in use, size, and design to the principal dwelling, and it has to be capable of being discontinued. So, from, without a demolition of a structural component of the principal dwelling. So, those are all other ways that would not change in the ordinance. Next slide, please. Utilities on a separate meter. This is started as a housekeeping one, but as you recall, in my front slide, I crossed it out. So, the city engineer has local regulations that require separate buildings when they're detached to have their own water service, separate water services. The utility section of the accessory dwelling unit ordinance is shown in red. It's that text there. It says electricity, water, oil, gas shall be provided by a single service to both the affordable accessory dwelling unit and the principal dwelling, and that's included in the rent. And that's intentional to make sure that the water bill isn't separated. That's part of the rent, and to make sure that it's connected to that primary residence. And we talked through this with the city engineer at the City Council meeting, the Committee of the Whole. This was discussed and recommended to have further conversation with the engineer, because it's really expensive to put in a separate line. And so, the city engineer agreed to have an exception for accessory dwelling units that are detached, and he was comfortable with that, because those units can never be condoized. They always have to be accessory to that primary dwelling. And so, for that reason, this was filed before we came to that conclusion with the city engineer, but I'd recommend not adopting this proposed amendment. Next slide, please. Detached structures in the current ordinance are allowed. They're allowed in existing structures, and existing is defined as, in existence, as of the effective date of this ordinance, and it has to have a foundation and have a minimum of 350 square feet. And then detached accessory dwelling units are treated as a primary structure in terms of setbacks. And what I mean by that is how far the building has to be from the property line. And so, you see a couple, a few of the residential zoning districts on that chart, from residential conservation, single-family, residential two-family, and multifamily. That's our three. And the setbacks from the side yard range from 10 feet to 40 feet, depending what zoning district you're in. So, currently, a detached structure would need to meet that setback. And I'm just showing a picture here of a neighborhood in Salem where, I think, nearly every lot has a detached structure. I don't, just visually looking at that, not a single one would meet the setback requirements. And so, while the ordinance allows existing detached structures, it's really hard to do it because of setback requirement. Next slide, please. So, the proposed amendment would allow new detached structures. It would also require structures to comply with the setback requirement of an accessory structure. Accessory structures are treated differently. They have a five-foot setback to any lot line, side lot and rail lot line, and they cannot be located closer than 10 feet to another building, whether it's on that lot or in a budding lot. It has to be at least 10 feet from another building. Next slide, please. And there's, as you were, there's an owner occupancy requirement that requires the primary dwelling or the ADU to be owner occupied. So, the homeowner can live in the smaller unit, or they could live in the primary unit. And the purpose for that is, you know, there were neighborhood concerns around absentee landlords and investors buying properties, and so this was to try to mitigate that. But Seth, I have heard from people who are interested in creating ADUs, and this creates a barrier for them, whether they currently own a home and might be interested in selling it in the future, not sure if they're still going to, or they might be interested in moving in the future, not sure if they're still going to live there, as well as people who are just interested in creating an ADU and not living in the home. So, the things that I just hope that the council and planning board and members of the public will consider in this conversation is that, you know, allowing non-owner occupied homes, to include an ADU, will increase the stock of affordable rental units. Again, the purpose of the ordinance, create affordable rental units. We're looking at, again, the range of $1,400 a month for a one-bedroom. Those units just don't, oh, I'm sorry, $1,500 a month for a one-bedroom, and those units just don't exist, and this would give an opportunity to create more of them. Next slide, please. That was all of the proposed amendments. So, I'm happy to take your questions and very eager to hear your discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Chiancola. I have one quick question before we get into the details. Can you define habitable space?
It's in the, it's either zoning code or building ordinance, so I'll get that for you.
Does it, just, does it, does it exclude certain rooms?
It does, yes. And it's also in the health code, but I'll have to get back to you with that.
That's fine. Counselor Barella?
Thank you, Chair Morcillo, or Counselor Morcillo, or President Morcillo, sorry. Through you two, Ms. Chiancola, the question about the proposed requirements for detached structures and setbacks. I'd like to see that it's the 10 feet from any principal building. In our current zoning, isn't the distance required 40 feet?
No, the 10 feet is from the current zone.
It is current. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions from counselors? Counselor Dominguez?
Thank you, Chair Morcillo. Thank you, Amanda, for your great presentation. As you may recall, we had a very content, one or two years, basically, dealing with this ordinance finally passed, and so many people in both sides argue different components. How are we going to address most of the concern? I've been having so many emails in the same lines that we're proposing. For example, one of the biggest concerns is about owner occupied. Basically, the proposed, from day one, intention was to deal with the in-law apartment, our seniors, people who wanted to age, and they don't have the capacity to stay home. Now, we, at this point here, and that's mainly proposed, changes that we're proposing here is because we wanted to see one side only affordable housing. How are you going to present to the public that the intent of many people trying to protect the seniors is being protected by this change right now? How can you assure the people of Salem now that now that we pass an ordinance, proposing that we're going to protect our more vulnerable one, now they are, they are not the one that we really target? We're targeting different ideas, different proposals, which is not bad, and don't get me wrong, I understand that we need more housing, we need any more than, but there's a lot of questions, a lot of concern in regard to owner occupied. Can you please tell to me and to the general public and to others why this change now will protect, basically, the seniors of this city right now? Thank you.
Thank you. So, I do want to note that the proposed amendments do not preclude in-law apartments or family members from renting. It just opens additional options. Again, the goal is here to create affordable rental units, which we very much need in Salem and throughout the Commonwealth. And I guess I don't understand what it's protecting these neighborhoods from, because it's just opening the door to create more rental units. So, it's still going to be an accessory unit. You would never know it's even there. I mean, they're hidden pretty well. The only difference is one of the people who live in the units don't live there, where this ordinance currently requires someone to live there. So, I guess I'd need to understand more what the concerns are that we're trying to protect against.
If I may?
Counselor Dominguez?
Basically, one of the major points that we usually express, if I recall well from last, last time, was that we don't want our neighborhood to be used as a business model for many developers who will take advantage of any, 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 any witness, because at the present situation that we are, we don't see so many of our residents changing to ADU. So, it's going to be an open door to allow the most powerful one to come and overcome and take over our neighborhood, and quality of life in our neighborhood is going to be changed, and the intent to really serve the most vulnerable one will not be there at the end. So, that's mainly the main concern. The idea of the ADU is not a bad idea, in my, in my own opinion. I am in favor. I just want to make sure that we really protect our people, that we really produce what we mean that we want to produce. The way I see this change is a little bit far away to that, because we allow more vulnerability to the people that we really want to protect.
Counselor Hapworth?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. And thank you, Amanda, for this, as always. Appreciate the hard work you put into this and to the communication. My question is also around the owner occupancy, and I think just not to get too deep into the weeds on the argument there. I think that I do have concerns that it does, it does move us away from what we initially, the initial spirit of this ordinance and sort of what we, how we sold it, how a lot of us discussed it with people. And I don't want to get into a sort of worries about what it's going to do to our neighborhoods. I don't have those concerns. But I do have concerns in the distance that it moves us from what we initially passed, and I think this is the most substantial thing that we have on here. My question is just in Section 2B, where it talks about owner occupancy. Right now, is a developer who buys a lot with the intention of turning it into, say, a single-family lot with an ADU, are they prevented from doing that if they're, if they're not going to live in that unit?
Yes.
Is that, is that only due to the final sentence there that says owner occupancy is required for an affordable accessory unit to be permitted?
What's challenging with that scenario, if you have a builder creating a home with an ADU in it and owner occupancy is a requirement, if they build out the ADU, it limits the pool of people who will be able to buy it, because then they have to be owner occupied. And so, I think, sure, you could probably tinker with the language to get it to a point that that would be allowed, but it, it does make it, it's, it'd be hard to enforce from the city's perspective, because we like to see, when the permit comes in, demonstration that it's owner occupied. And we can't do that for a building permit when we don't know who the end owner is.
I mean, could it, I guess my question is, is to operate, like, there's nothing preventing me from putting cafe tables and industrial dishwashers in my house, but I can't operate a restaurant from my house. Is it, is, are those two separate things permitting what's being built versus what is actually operating? Because I guess what I'm trying to get to, how do we allow, not that there's that many lots where that's going to happen in Salem, but how do we allow for a developer to build something that would allow for an ADU that's still going to be owner occupied without opening up the entire ordinance to say that these no longer need to be owner occupied? Because I think that folks do look at that as a nice, I guess, a nice, a nice element of this that sort of limits what, what their fears are for that neighborhood.
Yeah, I have talked to a developer who builds out single-family homes, and they said they essentially create basements that are ADU-ready, so it has two means of egress. It meets all the code requirements, but it's just an empty shell. And so, that way, if a future homeowner wants to create it, they have that option, and they can go through the permitting process. The homeowner would do that. It's just sort of ready to go, and then they need to put in all the fixtures for it.
Thank you.
Counselor Presnuski?
Thank you, President Morcillo, too, to Amanda. Amanda, you said earlier that limiting the number of bedrooms presents an issue with the fair housing consideration. I know that the ADUs are restricted to a 900-square-foot area. I'm just wondering about the legality of somebody who puts in more than two bedrooms, can three bedrooms fit inside of a 900-square-foot area and still be considered legal? I mean, are we talking three bedrooms the size of closets or under a stairway? I'm not sure exactly how many bedrooms could be fit into a 900-square-foot area, and that doesn't count the living space outside of that. Thank you.
You're correct. So, it does make it very challenging with the 900 square feet to add more bedrooms. So, it's unlikely you would have more. Anecdotally, yes, you could create more than two bedrooms, and I say this out of personal experience. My first home was 900 square feet, and it had three bedrooms, and they were the size of a closet built many years ago, but it is feasible. It's not particularly comfortable.
Does the building inspector's office require bedrooms to be a certain size square footage? Is there a minimum requirement for a bedroom in Salem?
There are health code requirements around minimum sizes, and there is a certificate of fitness requirement from the Health Department for these. I believe they have a minimum square feet, but I'll need to get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Counselor Counsel McLean.
Thank you, Counsel President. Excuse me. Thank you, Amanda, for the presentation again. I have a couple of questions. The first is about the amendment to Section 1 concerning the setbacks, which we talked about a little bit already. I'm having a hard time grasping a little bit of what sort of the mechanism of enforcement is in the ordinance for the setbacks. So I see that in the presentation that you gave us, it says that detached accessory dwelling units will be treated as primary structures for the purpose of setback requirements. But it seems like that is also what Paragraph 6, which we're proposing to delete, was saying, is that these structures need to conform to the setbacks of the principal structure. So I'm just having a hard time understanding what requires a detached structure to be treated with the same setbacks as the primary if we do, in fact, delete Paragraph 6. Is it a difference in definition between primary and principal? I'm just not quite getting it.
Thank you. Yeah, I wasn't clear there. When I was presenting that chart with the photo next to it, that's what's in the current ordinance. So you're right, it is number six that requires the accessory unit to be treated as the primary structure for setbacks. The proposed amendment removes that requirement. So it changes it from requiring 10 to 40-foot setbacks and proposing to reduce it to what necessary structure setback would be, which is the five feet.
So depending on the zoning district, obviously, because they're not all uniform, but there will see, you know, we'll see 50% or around 50% reduction in terms of the setback that's required if we delete Paragraph 6.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that. And my second question sort of runs to some of the commentary we've been hearing around wanting to maintain a little bit of that requirement for owner occupancy. That is, in my particular ward, one of the major concerns that I hear about is that sense of wanting to maintain a sense of ownership on the part of the people who actually own the property in the neighborhoods, right? Wanting to have a sense of accountability, wanting to have a sense of being part of the neighborhood fabric. I'm curious, as we look at all of these amendments, it seems to me that clearly the intent here is to sort of get greater uptake for this ordinance, right? We haven't seen a lot of permits come through. We haven't seen a lot of builders working towards this. So my question is, which of these proposed amendments do you think might be actually creating an impediment, if any, to people taking advantage of this? And what you see as the most key amendment in that sense?
From what I've heard from folks reaching out to me, a lot of people have reached out, I'd say a lot. I probably fielded four calls and emails in the last two weeks on detached structures. There was a lot of interest there. I've heard a little bit around owner occupancy, but not everyone who's interested in it reaches out as well. I think owner occupancy is just one that, I could see that creating more options if we removed that requirement. But the one that I've heard the most feedback on is detached structures. The rest of them really are housekeeping, fair housing, so it's the owner occupancy and the detached structures.
I'll just follow up on that quickly then. And I think I raised this question perhaps at the prior presentation. What kind of consideration was given to sort of a stepped measure of addressing this idea of not allowing new detached structures versus allowing all new detached structures? I think when we discussed this previously, I questioned the idea of how do we sort of create something that creates a reasonable moving target, right? So that if somebody upgrades their property, for the sake of argument, let's say they upgrade their property with a detached garage, right? And how do we get to a point where, you know, let's say in 30 years' time, they've paid off their mortgage, they own the property free and clear, how can we create an avenue for a person in that situation to say, now I've arrived at the point in my life where I'm going to consider an ADU, maybe I want to add one into this structure? And that feels a little bit more gradual, and that still feels like something that is situational for a resident versus just saying, we're going to remove this requirement entirely, and anybody can build these immediately? And so I wonder what kind of consideration was given to not just removing the definition of existing versus new, but sort of tailoring it and being able to say, this is not just appended to the moment in time when we pass this ordinance, but has some sort of sunset mechanism where it's like, okay, these structures that have now come into the neighborhood over time will become eligible over time, so the neighborhood can grow a little bit more organically instead of flipping a switch? Does that make sense?
It does, yeah. And I looked at that. I tried to find examples of it to identify what a best practice would be. Is it five years? Is it 10 years? Is it 30 years? And I couldn't find anything around it. And so it's certainly something that can be discussed and implemented. It's just, I haven't had that conversation around what that timeframe, what would make sense for that.
Thank you.
Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, President Marcelo. Through you to Amanda. Once again, thank you for the presentation tonight. On some of those same lines, when we talk about the owner occupancy requirement, part of what you just described was where the owner could live in the accessory unit. How does that work with the affordability? If the accessory unit is supposed to be the affordable unit, are we assuming that it's a senior that may need the affordable, and are they going to declare that as the rent and then rent the main part of the house out for whatever they want? Or how does that work? How does the affordability work both ways? Where the primary, if it is to be their primary residence and they move into the accessory unit, how does that work with the now primary dwelling on the site being the one they're renting? Are they still required to rent that as affordable?
So this is part of the current ordinance, not proposed to be amended. But to answer the question, yeah. So the homeowner can live in the affordable accessory dwelling unit, and they can charge their $0 and rent to themselves. Thus, they have an affordable unit for themselves, and they can rent the primary home at any rate they want. When we had talked about this at the first one, yeah, it was just thought that people might be in that circumstance where they need the more, the higher income to help support themselves.
Okay. To answer one of the questions that was proposed earlier, it's 70 square feet for a bedroom that's a single-occupied bedroom. I wanted to make sure I got the numbers right. I looked it up while I was sitting here. And it's, if you have two people living in a bedroom, it's 50 square feet of living space per person. So if you have, like, two kids in a bedroom, it technically should be 100 square feet. And a bedroom also is required a closet, so, which actually, it used to require a closet, but they may have changed that rule, too. I have to go double-backing on that one. I'm taking my builder's hat on now. But I double-checked the numbers, and it's 70 square feet is the minimum size for a bedroom. And that's with one person living in it. If you have two people, it gets bigger.
Thank you.
But I guess the homeowner occupancy is a big stickling point for me. And I'm going to wait to hear what a lot of other people have to say about it. I know we've got some interest on that. The only other question I would have is, I'd be interested to hear what the planning board has about the setbacks for detached structures. Obviously, a detached structure right now that currently exists can, I guess if you can make it work, you can get, you can put an accessory unit in there. But for new structures, I guess my question would be, currently, they'd have to conform to zoning because they now would have people living in them, where an accessory structure wouldn't have people living in them. So you potentially could be, if you have an accessory structure that's five foot, five feet from a side setback, and you have the house next door that's five feet, has 10 feet, so technically, instead of the two dwelling units being separated by a greater distance, now they're right next to each other, which could be problematic with zoning. That's why their accessory in nature is the fact that they're basically sheds or garages, and now you're going to make them into a primary. So it's an interesting question. But, I mean, I understand because a lot of the lot sizes would be difficult, but I'll wait to hear what other people have to say about that. But that is, that's something to consider, too. But it's a question in my head as well. But thank you.
Counsel Varela.
Thank you, President Marcelo, to you, to Amanda. I just need a little more clarification. After looking and reviewing Section 4.1 of our dimensional requirements, it does clearly state that the minimum lot distance between a building and the RC is 100 feet, R1 is 40 feet, R2 is 30 feet, and R3 is 40 feet as well. So my question is, I'm just a little confused on the 10-foot detached, on how that actually works within the underlying zoning.
Right. So this is in Section 3.2.4 specifically for accessory structures. So rather than two primary structures, it'd be an accessory structure cannot be located closer than 10 feet. So it's 3.2.43. So it's specifically defined in the accessory detached structure as an accessory building in that section.
And if I may, concerning accessory structures, it's always been historically a shed or something accessory to the use. So when we add occupancy to that, I guess the compromise is that that's going to continue as is for the accessory, for the setbacks?
So this ordinance is proposing that an accessory dwelling unit be treated as an accessory building rather than a primary building.
Okay. Thank you. Again, I just wanted to say that I think that's great. I have no problem with a 10-foot setback. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counsel Watsonfeld.
Thank you, Counsel President Marcelo. Through you to Amanda. Amanda, I have a couple of questions just about other considerations that have been a part of your development process for these amendments. The first is with regards to the creation of new detached structures. Has there been any data or research done or from an ecological perspective or an environmental perspective with regards to the effect of laying new foundation on land that is currently undeveloped, which is, you know, considered probably dirt, grass, whatever the case may be? And what effect that new concrete foundation may have on groundwater saturation with regards to pushing groundwater saturation, you know, towards foundations or further into the street? As we all know, not only is rising sea level a problem, but rising groundwater saturation is also a problem. And a lot of our historic properties, especially within flood zones, are experiencing water just coming up from the ground, you know, with the changing weather. Has that, has that been a part, or has the Conservation Commission had any comment on this, or any sort of environmental perspective taken on this amendment?
Yeah, the city engineer reviews stormwater runoff and has requirements about water not leaving the property and, you know, as the water drop forms and drops and penetrates right there on that site. So there is a review from the city engineer on it. There is a max building coverage in the ordinance as well, another dimensional standard. But Salem doesn't have a maximum impervious coverage requirement. And so you could by right pave the lot.
Right.
But if you're creating a structure, then that gets that review from the city engineer.
And pardon me, a follow-up there. So that review would be a part of the approval process for permitting these ADUs?
Right. The building permit process, it triggers a whole bunch of department reviews for an accessory dwelling unit. We do this viewpoint cloud system. It's an online permitting system, but essentially, it creates this workflow. I get alerted to it, and I check the rent, the owner occupancy, the city engineer gets alert, they do a review. If it's in Concom jurisdiction, they get a review. So it's a building permit, but there are a lot of other departments involved in making sure it meets their regulations.
And 100% of the time, an engineering review would take place with regards to ground permeation for these applications?
I know they review the stormwater requirements, what those specific requirements are for a single-family home, I'll have to get back to you on.
And I guess because there's the follow-up question then would be, if we are saying in these amendments that we're considering these as no longer being treated like primary or principal properties, and we're now considering them accessory properties, would that requirement be different?
It's still a building, and they're not looking at the zoning ordinance. They're looking at our NIPD's permit for stormwater and our federal requirements. But again, I'll follow up. I need to check with the city engineer. Again, I do want to note, you could pave your lot with no permit. So this is, it's creating the building, but that does have some sort of review.
Thank you. I have some additional questions. Thank you, Counsel President. There, in Ward 2 particularly, I think this owner occupancy is of great concern. One of the questions that you posed earlier tonight in conversation was, you know, that you were saying sort of, I don't understand what we're protecting neighborhoods from. In Ward 2 particularly, you know, there are a lot of exploitative absentee landlords that are of, or I consider it to be a lot, right? Based on the feedback I'm getting from constituents. Can you speak to whatever research or data there may be available with regards to absentee landlords that are behaving in exploitative ways? I would consider residents coming into these affordable units to be potentially far more vulnerable than folks with more, you know, liquid, more options, more housing resources available to them. And so I think part of the concern, I know for me personally with regards to owner occupancy, in addition to those mentioned prior by Counselor, by Ward 4 Counselor, being, you know, accountability and, you know, part of the neighborhood fabric, it's also, are we then further exposing potentially, or already vulnerable residents to potential exploitation behaviors, you know? Because as I understand it, as we've said before, and this came up the last time we talked, you know, enforcement is by reports only. There's no continued check-ins. There's no, you know, reviews at any point. So can you speak to whatever data may be available about absentee landlords and exploitative behaviors in Salem and how that may or may not have been a part of the consideration with the regards to the owner occupancy amendment?
Yeah, I haven't seen any data regarding absentee landlords being more prominent in accessory dwelling units or potential for accessory dwelling units. I guess I haven't seen anything that would suggest that you would have an absentee landlord if it's not owner-occupied. There aren't a whole lot of places in Massachusetts that allow non-owner-occupied ADUs. There are in other parts of the country. There are whole states that disallow it because they're trying to create more rental, more affordable rental units. So I don't have the data that you're asking for.
So let me just make a quick statement then to that point. I have concerns about owner occupancy because what I would not want to see happen is ADUs built and/or, you know, even current multifamilies further subdivided and there be no clear, consistent engagement, maintenance, you know, control actually of the rent over time and the potential abuse of some of our vulnerable residents. That's my primary concern about owner occupancy. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Marcelo. Through you to Amanda, and thank you also for the presentation. And regarding also the owner occupancy, I can understand the initial concern, you know, that it might change how developers approach, you know, how they build on that property. But then, moving forward as, you know, as the home exists and to Counselor Watsonfeld's point, would it be any different than how we oversee our current duplexes or three-family homes that, you know, are naturally, they're naturally affordable housing stock that we have a lot of in Salem? Yeah, I've lived in problem properties myself, and it is a concern. But would it basically be the same as all, like the duplexes or three-family homes that we already have in Salem as far as oversight? To your point, how we can, how the city protects against that in general? And also, one thing about, you know, as these age out a little bit, could it be, you know, could it be an issue like if a family, if a senior couple wants to move to Florida and they want to keep their asset, so they want to rent the house, but they've also had an ADU there? Let's say someone's lived in that ADU for a couple of years, but now they want to move out of state, but they want to keep their asset, as people often do. Then would the people in the ADU have to be evicted? Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for those questions. So the proposed ordinance would treat accessory units similar to our, you know, other homes throughout the city that doesn't require owner occupancy. So you're correct. It would, if there is a problem property, it would be So you're correct, it would, if there is a problem property, it would be treated the same as a two-family or a three-family that doesn't require owner occupancy. So this will be the only kind of home in Salem that requires owner occupancy. And you could build in language, if there's not comfort around having the owner occupancy not be allowed, you could build in language to that effect that, you know, for a year or two years, you could have a timeframe for the first two years, or one year has to be owner occupied, and then after that, doesn't. So that is an option that the council and the planning board can consider.
Any other councilors? Okay, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Chair Grissette, and you can have your board answer or ask questions?
Great. Thank you very much, President Morcello. Are there members of the planning board with questions or comments for Amanda? Yes, Mr. Fury.
Thank you, Mr. Schuman. Thank you for members of the city council. I'm very excited, Amanda, about the possibilities of more ADUs in the city of Salem. I see this with a very human face. I raised five teenage boys from DSS, Department of Social Services. They were living in 40 different homes before I came. One of my sons came from 15 different foster care homes. When each of my sons came to live in an ADU, owner occupied house, they were amazed by what a family is, by what a neighborhood is. And they each grew in their process, in the neighborhood schools they attended, in the middle schools they attended there along the way. It was win-win for the neighborhood, win-win for the family upstairs getting rent from their ADU. And for me, in my foster son, it was win-win-win. I see it as a possibility of more opportunities for living in Salem, and it's not perfect. Nothing is perfect. I hope more people that own their home, own their home, instead of moving out of the home and moving to a condominium and downsizing and so on, stay in their home and rent it out to ADU opportunities there. There were so many possibilities. I think we shouldn't be so afraid of developers coming in and taking advantage of the situation or some, in that situation. I think we should look, take the high road, and Amanda's proposed a number of good proposals that hopefully will alleviate that situation. I think you should look at the human face of Salem. There's a critical need of housing throughout the city of Salem, and I see ADUs as just one tool in the toolbox, allowing more people to live in owner occupied houses. It's the American dream, sincerely. People want to live in their own home, buy their own home, live in their own home. Here, my family, five DSS boys, all grown up now, love that opportunity. I think we should see that with a human face, a human face, and I see it with a human face. I'm excited about Amanda's opportunities in the ADUs. So I hope, great future for ADUs, owner occupied. Mine were not detached, they were all part of the house. Family members either moved away, and there was extra room in the house that I could move into. And my kids enjoyed it. I hope, I take the high road. I think this will be a win-win for owner occupied homes and for families moving in. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Other members of the planning board? Anyone else?
Councilor Terrell would like to speak.
All right, let's go to Councilor Terrell, and then we'll come back to Zach.
Thanks, I'm at the mic, so.
Speak right into the mic, please.
Yep. So I think there's probably room to modify this as far as detached structures, and we can probably do something within the special permit process to accommodate some of those scenarios. And then the couple of technical corrections to the staircase and, you know, deleting the water, that's simple enough. I do have serious concerns about changing the ownership requirement. I don't see, I see a scenario right now where one of the problems we have is that we have a lot of rental stock right now that's kind of getting sold and escalating greatly in price. And if you make it a good, if you make it an investor opportunity where buying a home where you can be a non-owner occupant and you could rent out both the ADU and the regular unit, I see a lot of potential for that to not help with our price escalation issues in rentals and, in fact, drive them up higher. I think we'd be better off with the, there may be some room for some flexibility on some of the owner occupancy requirements, like for instance, the scenario of somebody who has built it and retained it and now is relocating but wants to retain ownership of it. I don't know what the timeframes we would want to consider are, and I think that that's a discussion that we need to have. But outside of that scenario, I think ownership is, should be pretty much, remain a requirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Other members, let's go to Zach. You had a question or comment, Zach?
Yeah, I had a little bit of both. I had a question related to, again, the owner occupancy requirement. I was wondering, does this have any impact on the ordinance on short-term rentals to sort of alleviate individuals who might be concerned about this change in the ordinance and how it might create more like Airbnb stock, you know, short-term rental stock that might impact housing in the area, kind of defeat the purpose? And then I can continue on.
The ordinance prohibits accessory dwelling units from becoming short-term rentals, and it's sort of, that's in two places. It's in this ordinance, it's also in the short-term rental requirements in the code of ordinances, and that also prohibits accessory dwelling units from being short-term rentals, and it is something we check. And then we scrub those short-term rentals to make sure that it's in compliance.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I generally don't have a problem with removing the owner occupancy requirements. I mean, I think that any sort of increase in the housing stock that allows people to move into our city is a good thing. I don't see, you know, renters as a class of individuals that we don't want moving into town for a few years. So that's one of the reasons that I think this is a decent ordinance. I mean, I'm still, I think the jury's still out on, you know, whether we should adopt it as written. Now, there might be some tweaks that we might want, but, you know, I will consider and keep thinking a little bit more on that particular issue. But thank you for the presentation, and thank you for all the questions I've been hearing today, anyway.
Thank you, Zach. Other members of the planning board with questions or comments? All right, President Morcello.
Okay, we're just trying to get a little technical thing fixed here. Can you? Yeah. Yeah, because it's not flipping back. Okay. All right, we'll keep going, though. So if there's no more questions for us, we are going to open this up to the public. If you have a comment or a question and you're joining us through Zoom, you can use the star nine. If you are in the room here, you can approach the microphone. Okay, we're going to start with someone in the room. If you can state your name and your address for the record, please, and speak right into the microphone.
Thank you. My name is Damian Jarra. I reside at 5 Hillside Avenue here in Salem. Most of the guys on the council that know me know that I opposed the initial passage of this, and the fear was we would be in this room having this discussion right now. Ty, I appreciate you really did reference some of the conversations you had, and my biggest concern is how far this goes away. I was one of those people we had this conversation with, and it has gone way past what this was initially intended to be. The state has abolished the property tax with relation to this, and Salem said, we still don't want to do it. That's why we only have eight applications, it's because we don't want it. They offered rebates to the tune of $47,500, and Salem said, we still don't want it. So what are they proposing to do? They're proposing to basically stick it to the residents by eliminating owner occupation as a contingency and open us up to more outside development, something that is a huge concern here. They're going to change the setback requirements, risking overcrowding, they're going to allow three or more bedrooms, and one of the dumbfounded things that I heard in this room is basically she shot down her own proposal, saying it is going to be very tight. We're going to really constrain living conditions for some of these poor families and potentially have landlords exploit very small space to try and cram large families into these units, and it just isn't going to work. If this passes, we should just abolish zoning meetings. Zoning laws don't exist anymore. We won't have single-family zoning. You know, Ty, one of the things we cited, you know, about when it came down to Domingo becoming council president was how heated this debate got and some of the issues you had with how that came about. And ultimately, I don't think we want to get back to that. I want to get back to traditions. I want to see Domingo become council president.
Excuse me, can you stick to the question? Thank you.
But instead, what we need to do here is we need to admit that we got this wrong. Instead of beating a dead horse, they're trying to strip back every safeguard they put in place to address the initial concerns. They're going to say to Salem residents, well, if you don't want it, we're going to look outside and bring outside developers in that do want it. Domingo was right.
Excuse me, can you address the president?
I'm on topic. Domingo was right, Tim Flynn was right, Steve Dibble was right. We need to stop changing the rules to get to what ultimately is the end goal, I think, of some people within this mayor's administration, and that is to circumvent and abolish single-family zoning.
Thank you. We have one more in chambers.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, councilors and planning board members. I wasn't going to speak on this tonight.
Can you give your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, let me back up. My name is Steve Dibble, former city councilor at 74 Moffett Road, where I reside. Thank you for reminding me. This is the first time in over a decade I've sat on this side of the microphone. I'm used to sitting on that side with you all, and I miss serving with you all. Everyone wants affordable housing. I mean, that's a no-brainer. We all want good, safe housing in good neighborhoods. I applaud the city councilors and the planning board members here tonight, who spoke up on some of these concerns within the changes here, specifically on zoning, owner occupied helping to protect residents, the five-foot setback, it's simply too close, the density, the rental apartment should be affordable. Council Fury and Councilor Terrell, former councilors, summed up nicely on keeping the owner occupancy part of it to help protect the neighborhood. Six years ago, you might remember, Councilor Elaine Milo and I sponsored the old in-law apartment ordinance that allowed family members to help their relatives. Nearly everyone in Salem welcomed that good housing option. The changes that you're talking about here tonight will promote the more, will promote more construction of even more ADU apartments that aren't really affordable. Most likely, they're not going to be affordable unless the owner occupied person gives the apartment away at a decent price. There's nothing absolutely requiring it, because what's in here now is not affordable The changes to this ordinance, it doesn't help Salem, and I'm suggesting that you don't make these changes to the ADU ordinance. The ADUs don't have property tax now, they're being offered grants to help construct these ADU apartments. So therefore, everybody else's tax bill in the entire city will go up when more of these units are being built and they don't come with taxes to offset the expenses that these occupants will create by sending children to school or whatever services they require. Every other taxpayer in Salem will be required to pay for their fair share. So everybody's tax bill is wanting to go up as more and more ADUs wind up being built, and there's nothing really making them affordable, because what the state law claims is affordable is not affordable anything. This change will hurt Salem's awesome neighborhoods. It will add more traffic, it may jam more apartments where they typically don't belong or they don't fit, where there might not be enough parking. And often, they're just not affordable anything, as I said earlier. If you want to do something really, really good to help, to build affordable apartments, we should stop building luxury apartments everywhere and build housing that is truly affordable. These changes here that you're reviewing tonight hurt Salem, and it's affordable nothing. So thank you for your time here tonight. Good job on all the questions that the councilors and the planning board members are raising on this matter.
Thank you. We also have some members of the public through Zoom. Madam City Clerk?
I have several questions and a couple of statements. I'm very concerned about the setback issue, and I think it's not correct to perceive that these are hidden, as Ms. Giancola stated. On three sides, conceivably, each of these ADUs would be visible to a butters. And I think one of the communities that has recently looked at their ADU ordinances is Newton, and Newton specifically is now concerned about the fact that their ADU ordinance does not provide any screening from a butters. And so that's not part of this ordinance, as I understand it, and obviously, it may be up to the planning board, but I think the fewer problems that we leave to, you know, a changing makeup of a planning board over time is best codified. So I think that the setbacks are too small for the density of Salem as it exists. And let me also add that for, being a member of the South Salem Neighborhood Association for 25 years, the biggest problem we had for decades was absentee landlords and apartments that were occupied by college students. That problem largely went away as those apartment rentals generally were changed to condos. But we had a significant behavior problem with unregulated apartment dwellers who consistently caused problems. Now, as I think our former Ward 5 councilor will attest, it's down to just a few houses. But with this kind of density, this is a problem that can continue. I do fear, as we see across the country, that investment firms are buying up hundreds of millions of dollars of single-family homes for their investment funds. And this is conceivably a danger that we may face as they continue to look for opportunities to make profits in their funds. I'm not seeing that this necessarily, in the affordability component of this, provides opportunity for Salem residents. I think we're all aware of the long wait times that there are in Salem for senior housing, but I'm not seeing this as a solution to residents of Salem who are in line to get a senior housing slot. I also point out to you that one of the concerns that residents in Newton had was that because many seniors who own homes have to put their property into a trust for their protection, that this ownership issue of whose trust owning a property may need to be clarified. So I just, I want to point out also, Gateway Center, which is the other condo section of where our senior center is, our community life center, was a fully permitted opportunity for 117 residents. That is now crickets and tumbleweeds, and it has been for many years. I think it's, if we want to get more housing, that we should not allow developers to sit on fully permitted property and mothball it, hoping that it goes up in value. I think we've been snookered by that developer.
Okay, can we stick to the ADUs, please?
I think, in the sense that you are considering the ADUs as an opportunity to create housing, I think it needs to be done in the broader context of housing that's permitted and not being created, and that 117 units certainly could be constructed much more quickly in a greater number than the ADUs that you may get at eight, or 10, or 12 a year. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to give Amanda a minute to talk about the putting your house in a trust, because this did come up at the same. because this did come up at the September 8 meeting. I had the same question about how a senior would be able to do that if they're not on the deed as the owner and it's in a trust.
So when the home is put into a trust, there's a declaration of the trust and there's, it identifies the trustees. You have to have a document that says who can speak on behalf of the trust and who can sign on behalf of that. And so in that, we haven't come across that situation, but if we did, we'd require some kind of documentation that shows who is allowed to sign on behalf of the trust and then have that person demonstrate that they are owner-occupied.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
Yep, I have a Steven. Just says Steven.
Steven, if you can unmute and give your name and address for the record, please.
Steven, can you unmute yourself, please?
There you go.
Yep, there you go.
Try it now, Steven.
Did we lose him? Want to come back to him?
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, yes, I've been a resident of 5 Cedar Crest Ave for 39 years. And so my concern about the ADUs.
I'm sorry, can you just take a minute and give your name and address for the record? We missed that if you gave it.
My name is Steven Nickerson. I live at 5 Cedar Crest Ave, Salem, for 39 years.
Thank you.
I'm a neighbor of Andy. So, but yes, so I've been hearing about the ADUs and I guess primarily, my concern is about affordable housing in Salem is that's a concern. And I see a lot of construction going on, many apartments being built. And most recently, the Bates Complex in South Salem campus is up for sale. Why can't we use that as affordable housing, number one? Okay. Number two, we're talking about owner-occupied versus non-occupied. That's a problem. And we also have parking in traffic when we have these affordable, you know, these ADUs that we're proposing. And with setbacks, that could cause a lot of issues. We have, in our neighborhood, we have some group homes that would probably allow them to build another building on their property, which would increase traffic in our neighborhood. And so, I mean, it'd be interesting to know, how many applications to date have there been for ADUs in the city? If it's overwhelming, then we have to address that. But if it's only a few, why do we have to go and amend all these ordinances for setbacks, et cetera? It's very concerning to me at this point. And from what I heard from Amanda, her support for this is quite weak for having ADUs in the city and changing the ordinances that we have already in the city. And, yes, Polly, she's right on point with what's going on in South Salem as well. We have a lot of students and, quite frankly, all my neighbors, if we all went with ADUs, we would have cars everywhere, and where would we put them? There's just no place for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Judith Riley. Oh, hold on, Judith.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Judith Riley. I live at 20 West Avenue in South Salem, and I would just like to voice my support for ADUs in Salem. I think it's something that we should definitely give a try to. I, if I look out my window and I see a garage now, if it's a garage that's turned into an apartment in the future, I pretty much feel like that's not a big change for me. I don't need any screening to prevent me from seeing that garage or even an outbuilding that's been constructed as an ADU. I think, as capitalism skeptical as I can be, I think the more units of housing we have, the more affordability we will create. And I also am a very strong believer that we need to correct problems with the right solution. So if there are any rowdy houses, they should be dealt with by our police and buildings department in the appropriate channels. And that is regardless of whether they are owner-occupied multifamilies or rented out to students or rented out to me. If I'm rowdy, I expect to be dealt with by the authorities appropriately. So I really appreciate the city council and the planning department working.
Oh, Judith, you muted yourself. Judith, are you still there? Nope. Okay. I think we got the gist. Yep. Anyone else? Stacia Craft.
Stacia Craft. Hi, it's Stacia Craft, 140 Federal. I just wanted to speak about some anecdotal, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can they hear me? Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay. I just wanted to give you some anecdotal evidence. I live on.
We can hear you.
Okay. I just wanted to give you some anecdotal evidence. 140 Federal Street. And I've got two phone calls today and get phone calls regularly about people who are wondering if I'd like to sell my house. And I think that's because I live in an area that has some property and my neighbor is 100 and she has property. And these are, you know, anonymous numbers, so, phone numbers. So I'm imagining that there are developers just watching over what Salem is doing and waiting to jump. Additional anecdotal evidence, too, about Airbnbs. I've bumped into people all over the place that have, oh, so-and-so, my son moved from Marblehead. They just moved in and they've got an Airbnb. This house is near the Airbnb. I'm wondering how well we are actually vetting the Airbnbs. And I'm, you know, I'm just seeing how this, I mean, this could be ripe for developers who want to just exploit the temporary housing. That's really concerning. I know that in my neighborhood, everybody just says, oh, I think that's an Airbnb. Oh, I think that one is. And it's, you know, it's really unclear. I also would like to say one last thing about affordable housing and the use of that term. When we say affordable housing, we actually are talking about, in most cases, it's this AMI that's 60%, which is not, doesn't relate to Salem. So I would love it if we talked more about subsidized housing versus affordable housing, which really is not affordable and which is gentrifying our communities. So I wish that you would be a little more careful with that language. I wish that all the councillors would be very careful with that language. Because when we talk about 60% AMI and we're giving these benefits because of the 60% AMI, we're actually giving benefits for gentrification because our communities' AMI is more like 30% of the Boston AMI. So that's the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda, can you come up and talk about the median Salem income and where we fall within the AMI?
Sure. So Salem's median income, median, right smack in the middle median. Salem's median income is right around 60% of the regional area median income. Of course, half of the people, that means, make less than 60% of the regional area median income, and half of the households in Salem make more than that. I don't have the number in front of me, but the regional income is over $100,000. It's like maybe $114,000 is the metro Boston's median income. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, that's why we are using that 60% number, is because that fits Salem's.
Right. And for the accessory dwelling unit, we're actually looking at fair market rent. And it's 70% of what the fair market rent is, which is about equivalent to area median income, but we separated that from area median income for a few reasons. But mainly because this is just looking at rents rather than household income.
Correct. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public? Jen Lynch.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jen Lynch. I'm at 38 Charles Street in South Salem. I just wanted to voice my support for ADUs generally and to say I'm pretty comfortable in principle with the proposed changes. I heard enough thoughtful questions from the council and the planning board that I think we probably can get to a good compromise on some of the sticking points and the issues that were raised tonight. For the record, I do feel that my neighborhood is improved by the variety of housing options on my street. And I agree with an earlier comment that bad actors should be dealt with and not used as an excuse not to try something new. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Jay, Jay Wits? Jay Wit? Jay, you are using an older version of Zoom and we're having trouble connecting with you. If there's a way you can phone in and try to make your comment. But at the moment, we can't promote you, unfortunately. Is there anyone else? Mariano Messo?
Hi, I'm his wife. His name is Mariano Agoscu Trado. We live in 41 W. Avenue, Salem.
Go ahead, thank you.
I am pretty much also supporting Jen and Judith because I think everybody is going crazy. They think that they're going to build ADUs in like, in the, like every single corner. I think if you have rules, like everything, we have to have rules and regulations to be able to build something. We have a pretty big backyard and we are a perfect candidate to be first, the first detached unit in Salem. I think as long as you have the space, the correct layout, the correct parking, because of the regulation that requires the unit, I think you guys need to think about this and approve. Like I said, it's, we need this in Salem. We really need Salem. The rent is insanely high. I have two kids, young adults, and trying to move back to Salem because right now it's between school and work, and that shouldn't be like that. That shouldn't be like that. It's pretty crazy. $3,000 for two bedroom apartments without utilities, I think, is insane for our young adults. Not only, this is not only for senior living, this is only for young adults and family members that wants to, you know, grow and love Salem and live in Salem. And I support again Jen and Judith, and thank you for supporting this idea. That's it.
Thank you. That's it. I have a few things to read into the record. "We, the Board of the Federal Street Neighborhood Association, strongly oppose two of the proposed changes to the ADU ordinance, namely, the provision for construction of new detached units and removing the owner occupancy requirement. These changes would remove important protections for neighborhoods, even as the benefits will likely not go to those who need them most. Remember how this ordinance was sold and is still being sold to the public as creating in-law suites, granny flats, et cetera, which helps seniors and families stay in their homes and make ends meet. The proposed removal of the occupancy requirement, however, would benefit wealthier homeowners, developers, and would encourage real estate speculation. The same is true for allowing new detached structures. Aside from the negative impacts to neighbors, who has the property size and resources to build new detached structures, especially with new water lines? Clearly not the senior or the family struggling to stay in their home. In addition, this change would mean a new 1.5-story structure could now be placed five feet from the property line. This does not align with the purpose of our zoning ordinance, Section 1.1. It certainly does not lessen congestion in the streets, provide adequate light and air, prevent overcrowding of land, nor avoid undue concentration of population. We urge you to vote against these two proposed changes. Sincerely, FSNA Board." Second, "Good afternoon. I am resuming my comments sent in late October regarding proposed changes to the ADU ordinance since I am unable to attend this evening's meeting. As well, I am adding a few other questions and thoughts. One, first and foremost, it is most concerning that changes to a new existing ordinance feels like it is being rushed through in a few short months. There were 11 permits from 2018 to 2020 and eight permits in the 18 months, which is approximately three permits per year in the past and eight permits in 18 months. The math says more housing units have been created since the ordinance has been put in place. As I stated below in my original comments, how many requests failed to meet the guidelines in current ordinance? How many of each type? Did one person say they'd create an ADU if they didn't need to live there? Is that sufficient to change the ordinance? It seems like we need to give this a little more time and provide more analysis before jumping on a quick change to the ordinance. Two, as far as precluding developers from building an ADU on the same property as building an unattached ADU, who would own the property? Would the owner buy both buildings and rent them both out? Could they be sold separately? This sounds more like an investment opportunity for the developer buyer to put two rental properties on one lot versus creating an ADU to help with the housing shortage. And is this regarding building apartments with a designated number of ADUs? This seems contrary since the definition of an ADU in the ordinance reads, "adding gross floor space to the principal dwelling unit after the adoption of this ordinance." In a multi-unit building, what would be the principal dwelling? This feels like apples to oranges. Adding an ADU to an existing property is not the same as developers building two or more units on the same property. Aren't developers now required to include a certain number percentage of affordable units when they build multi-unit complexes? Three, on the issue of deleting water from the ordinance, 3.2.8.5J, does this mean that when renters would have a water meter, but the bill for that water would go to the owner? It should be clarified in the ordinance who actually pays for the water. The change implies that the water will The change implies that the water will not be included in rent payment. Number four, should there be a lot size requirement for adding an ADU? I'm not familiar with any current limitations on lot sizes, but, but adding another unit onto a small piece of property does not seem to make sense. Again, I'm sorry, I can't attend this meeting, but wanted to share my thoughts on what seems to be a reactionary change to this ordinance, rather than a well-thought-out, fact-based approach to amending it. As always, thanks for the opportunity to comment on important city business. Best, Linda Ferrareso, 67 Aurora Lane, Salem. And I believe, if there's no one else with their hand raised, I believe that brings us to the end of the public comment.
I just had someone raise their hands.
Okay.
Peggy and Tim Doggett.
I'm sorry, I didn't. What's her name?
Peggy and Tim Doggett.
Peggy and Tim Doggett.
I haven't unmuted yet.
Can you unmute yourself, Peggy and Tim?
I, I think I just did.
Okay, go ahead. Insert your name and address.
My thoughts are...
Can you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Tim Doggett, 9 Lynn Street, Salem.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. My, my thoughts are zoning and future zoning. If we kind of limit the zoning of this ADU and how it affects the present zoning, and that would be, you know, setbacks and parking, then does that open the window for someone downstream to request changing the zoning for non-ADUs to fit the same scale so that we end up with greater crowding, less setbacks, less parking restrictions? I'd be interested to hear the comments as to what might be the next step, because I'm concerned that as we reduce the requirements, they just continue to be reduced, and we find ourselves in a situation that is not Salem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Chancola, do you want to speak to if homeowners want to build outside of the zoning requirements?
Sure. If a homeowner wants to build, if you, if you have an existing non-conforming property, non-conforming lot, or non-conforming building, you can get a special permit to go from, to increase that non-conformity. It goes through the Zoning Board of Appeals. If you don't meet the underlying zoning, you know, you need to get a variance process. But this question, I think, was asking like, will this create future zoning amendments? Essentially, does it open the door to future zoning amendments? I will say that 90% of the residential lots in Salem don't comply with the minimum lot area, and so there's a lot more to that, whether ADUs are the step in amending our zoning or just in general. I don't think that this ordinance is what's going to take that next step, but looking at our zoning ordinance, our dimensional standards is a recommendation in the housing roadmap. So while it's a separate thing, it's not related to this, but it is something that is included in our housing roadmap.
Thank you. I would also say that most of our historic districts don't follow the underlying zoning for setbacks, for instance. Yep. Go ahead.
And I do have a public comment that was received during the meeting and is forwarded via email to council and planning board. This person had to put their kids to bed, but wanted to read this in the record. My name is Lois Bauer, and my family and I live at 20 Larchmont Road. We began looking into question, into the question of whether we could build an ADU because we're anticipating the need to pool resources with and support an in-law in the not-too-distant future. Our house is on a pretty small lot, and we are hoping to marginally expand the footprint of an existing and non-conforming detached garage to create an ADU. In preliminary research and conversations, we found uncertainty about whether factors such as parking and setback requirements would make this infeasible. I wanted to state that I'm in favor of removing barriers in the ways I'm seeing here tonight, particularly as related to setbacks.
Okay, thank you.
Jay Witt is back in the standup. We'll have her.
Okay, Jay, let's try this again. Jay, you are unmuted. If you want to give your name and address for the record, please. Jay, one more time, if you can give your name and address for the record. Still having problems there. Is there anyone else?
Yeah, we just have Lois, but just briefly.
Okay. Lois, you're up next. If you could give your name and address. Hold on just a minute. Okay, Lois.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, but you have a lot of feedback.
Bang, 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 bang. Is that better?
No, actually, it's really bad.
She can mute. She should turn off.
If, Lois, if you're on the phone and your computer, mute your computer. Turn off the speaker and just use your phone.
I'm having, having, having... I'm having trouble on the...
Okay.
One moment.
Okay, we're gonna go to the next person while you figure out your audio.
Thank you.
Okay. Elena from the planning board.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to acknowledge receipt of a couple written comments. I can read you the name and address of the senders, or if you like, I could read them in their entirety.
If you want to read them into the record, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, we have a comment from Barbara Cleary of 104 Federal Street. Dear City Councilors and Planning Board members, I am writing to comment on the proposed amendment to the ADU ordinance. Specifically, I am opposed to removing the owner occupancy requirement. This ordinance was initially sold as an opportunity for residents to stay in their homes by receiving rental income and to provide affordable alternatives to lower-income residents. This change will negate those laudable goals. Without the owner occupancy requirement, this ordinance will essentially change zoning throughout the city, making every single-family lot into a two-family zone and every two-family into a three-family zone. There is no guarantee that this change will contribute to affordability and an argument to be made that it will contribute to higher housing prices. We are all aware of the phenomena of developers paying top dollar to secure modest existing properties and convert them to high and luxury homes. Allowing an additional unit on every single-family and two-family plot of land in a city will only exacerbate this trend by making every plot of land more valuable to the development community. Further, prior to making such a wholesale change in Salem's zoning ordinance, the planning board and city council should have significantly more data to support the change. The fact that Oregon made this change or that the AARP says it would make financing easier are slim arguments for a significant change in Salem zoning with the potential to contribute to a further deterioration of affordability. Thank you for consideration of these comments. A comment from Elaine Wick, Wintman, 28 Beckford Street. Dear Salem City Councilors and Planning Board staff and members, I strongly feel that the ADU ordinance should remain as it currently stands. As the rules currently state, the ADU ordinance is a good and reasonable way to help homeowners supplement their income and stay in their homes. It provides more housing units in Salem, something we sorely need. The rules also provide for protections of neighborhoods, including parking. I strongly feel that the proposed ordinances, proposed changes are a mistake. New structures can be built, appropriate setbacks...
Mute it.
Okay.
Appropriate setbacks from the property line would no longer apply, and most significantly, owner occupancy would no longer be required, completely negating the purpose of the ordinance to help homeowners stay in their homes. Also, why does the two-bedroom limit need to be removed? Thank you for considering the opinion of a Salem homeowner, one who is a senior and understands the importance of an ADU ordinance. Elizabeth Dixon, 135 Federal Street. I hope you will not approve the proposed changes. The ADUs were proposed in the first place as granny flats to help families stay together. To throw out, we'll get rid of the owner occupancy requirement as well as established zoning. This would create more density in already crowded areas. Bottom line, the only people to benefit from this proposal will be developers and landowners, not the citizens or the city of Salem. Please let Salem take a breath. Frankly, there is so much development going on that the wisest move would be to let things settle and keep the ADU ordinance as it is. I believe that the letter from the Federal Street Neighborhood Association was already read into the record.
Yes, it was.
Okay. Josiah Fink of 358 Essex Street. Dear Councilors and members of the planning board, when initially proposed and passed, the Salem ADU ordinance was billed as a way to permit in-law apartments, or as the British say, granny flats. It was always clear that this billing was somewhat disingenuous and that there was no requirement that an ADU actually be for in-laws or grandparents, or indeed any relative at all. It was mainly about creating rental units. Nonetheless, the ordinance contained important provisions designed to... I'm sorry, I believe I'm missing a word. Designed to prevent zoning violations and unbridled... Unbridled commercial exploitation. An additional unit needed to be smaller than the main unit, and two units could not be made into separate properties, and one unit or the other needed to be the legal residence of the property owner. The proposed changes not only make a mockery of the entire ADU concept, but would thoroughly change the nature and impact of ADUs. The proposed changes, in effect, would constitute a partial dismantling of zoning by other means with the potential for significant negative consequences for Salem. We've been hearing for several years how zoning amounts to institutionalize nimbyism and is a chief obstacle to lowering housing costs and increasing the number of available units. But what are the specifics of this complaint? They are that zoning creates sprawling neighborhoods of single-family homes served by strip malls, a wasteful landscape geared towards those who can afford to buy both a house and a car or two. No doubt in places this is true, but that is not true for most of Salem. Moreover, what do the critics of zoning hold up as their ideal? According to Gateway City literature, the ideal is a small city with a vibrant and walkable downtown, mixed-use buildings with first-floor businesses or office space and residential above, a broad mix of housing options, and public transportation accessible from downtown. In other words, the goal of changing zoning practices is to create places that are exactly as Salem is right now. Just as the initial ADU ordinance was never really about creating apartments for grandmothers, the proposed changes are not really about helping property owners. It is transparently about one thing, increasing opportunities for developers and real estate investors. It will shift owner-occupied properties to absentee-owned rental properties. The condition of many of these properties will deteriorate. The population of short-term residents will increase, the proportion of people involved in creating a sense of community will fall. Yards will be filled with new standalone accessory dwellings, and what grass and gardens are left will be paved so that each unit can have off-street parking. Excessive or insensitive development will make adjacent properties less desirable, increasing the number of owners who choose to sell and leading to a domino effect as their properties in turn go to investors because it is only investors, it is only for investors that the numbers make sense. Whether or not this is the stated goal of the proposed changes to the ADU ordinance doesn't matter, it is what will happen. I, I happen to agree that Salem, like every community in Eastern Mass, should build more affordable housing, but the most efficient and appropriate way is for large developments downtown. Downtown is where people want to live, and it is close to the train station. And for the record, downtown basically is my backyard. Not only that, but of the 11 houses in my block of Essex Street in the McIntyre, all of them were originally built as single-family homes, and only two are single-family today. The number of units provided by those remaining nine houses, more than 40, the most of which are affordable rental units. Once again, what we're being told is that the ideal mix of housing options is exactly what we already have. Salem's neighborhoods are not broken, Salem zoning is not broken, Salem has done more than its share for affordable housing and has more units in the pipeline. I urge council not to approve the proposed changes to the ADU ordinance. Thank you for your attention. Comment by Lois Bauer, 20 Larchmont.
We, we already have that one.
I believe, okay. Counselor, I believe you read a comment from Lois Ferriesso of 315 Essex.
I did, yes.
Then, final comment from Meg Tuohe, 122 Federal Street. I cannot attend tonight's meeting, but wanted to register my opposition to the proposed changes. These changes are not in the spirit of the original ADU ordinance is missing, which was billed as a way to help seniors and families make ends meet. Rather, the changes would benefit wealthy homeowners, developers, and landlords, which our neighborhoods would bear the cost. I concur with the letter written by the Board of the Federal Street Neighborhood Association and oppose these changes. Please leave the current ordinance in place. The current ADU ordinance is a reasonable way to help homeowners supplement their income and stay in their homes and provide more affordable dwelling units in Salem. At the same time, the rules also help to ensure protections for neighborhoods. Thank you. That concludes the written comments.
Elena, I actually read in Linda Ferrareso, not Lois, her sister. So if you could read Lois's into the record also.
Okay, Lois Ferriesso of 315 Essex, Unit 3. Dear Salem Planning Board and City Councilors, I write to you deeply concerned regarding the proposed amendments to Salem's accessory dwelling unit ordinance. After intense discussion, controversy, review, several failed city council supermajority votes and state law changes that provided simple majority votes, Salem City Council passed the ADU ordinance in 2021. Understandably, the final vote to implement the ordinance did not please everyone. It did have an admirable goal to assist seniors and families to add to their income, allowing them to stay in their homes, as well as providing an affordable, safe residence for our neighbors in need. It is notable that Salem is acutely aware of the lack of affordable housing and the need to address this issue for its residents who cannot find housing within their limited income. By passing the original ADU ordinance, councilors took intentional and thorough steps to meet this need. The proposed changes to the ADU ordinance not only do not meet the original goals, it eliminates many of the original components that benefit the homeowners, renters, and neighborhoods. Some of the concerns that impact those involved include: Eliminating the owner occupancy requirement ignores the primary benefit to help seniors and families to accrue additional income that will keep them in their homes. This proposed change would allow real estate developers, absentee landlords, investors, wealthy homeowners to build more units on the property with little commitment given to maintaining affordability and ensuring protection to the neighborhoods. Proposed changes would allow new detached units to be built on the property that would require reducing appropriate setbacks, minimizing open space, removing existing trees, and infringing on neighbors' zoned privacy. These changes would not benefit any of the stakeholders in this plan. In situations where there is one original structure on the property, such as condominiums or multifamily residences, where would more than one new ADU fit on the property, especially if a new unit has more than two bedrooms? I am unaware, I am unaware of the height specifications on ADU units. This scenario validates that the new proposed requirements do not meet the intended benefit of the original ordinance. I ask that the planning board and city council consider my concerns and recognize that the original ordinance's goal and benefits should remain as they were intended, allowing older residents to stay in their homes and gain income while encouraging more affordable housing. The new ordinance does not meet these goals.
Okay, thank you.
That concludes...
Yeah. All right. All right, at this...
I have three people here.
Okay, we have a few more people.
The first one's a phone number ending in 093.
Phone number ending in 093. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, last, this is Justin Widder. I've been trying with little success to get through, but I finally have. Okay, Justin Widder, 10 River Street. I am president of Federal Street Neighborhood Association, but I'm speaking on my own behalf at this point. I just want to begin by noting that Ms. Chancola read an example of a personal question on this issue, and based on what she said, it seems as though that would be already permitted under the current ordinance. And I'll just note that it seems a bit bizarre to have her reading from someone who's in favor of the proposed change. I note that she's not going to read from anybody opposed to the change. But I'll leave that aside, and I just want everyone to be clear, since there seems to be confusion from people who are having comments. ADUs are already allowed in Salem. We have an ordinance that allows that. So the present change isn't about creating affordable housing. The current ordinance is already written to do just that. This isn't about helping seniors and families stay in their homes. The current ordinance already does that. This is about removing protections for neighborhoods, and the benefits would flow overwhelmingly to developers, landlords, and the like. And the cost would be in open space, light, parking, et cetera. The cost would be borne by neighborhoods. There were some good questions asked tonight. I appreciate everything that I heard from former councilors and councilors in the room. And we all recognize that zoning involves trade-offs. There's a cost and a benefit to everything. But these changes clearly mean too much cost for neighborhoods for too little benefit. So I hope very much that you will vote against these proposed changes. Let me be specific, the new construction and the owner occupancy requirement, removal of that, those two, I urge you to vote against those. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
President Morcello, I ask to be recognized.
Chair, Chris App.
Thank you, President Morcello. I just want to make a comment. I take great exception to the last speaker's reference to Amanda Chancola, who works tirelessly in City Hall on behalf of all of us, and to suggest that Amanda would only read a favorable letter, which is in fact not what she did at all, I find quite offensive. So I just wanted to comment. Thank you very much, President Morcello.
Thank you for saying that. I was going to say the same thing. Next, next up.
I have Whitney.
Whitney.
Hey, hello.
Hi, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yep. It's Mary Whitney, 356 Essex Street, Unit 2. And I just want to thank my Ward 2 counselor for raising some of the environmental questions. I was surprised, and I'm not sure I understood how the city engineer will look at the stormwater and approve it, and then here, at the same time that a homeowner could pave over their entire lot, and there's nothing preventing them from doing that. I mean, that seems to defeat any work by the city engineer to oversee the stormwater. And the question of the groundwater rising, we already had that in 2011, major flooding on Forester Street, water coming up to people's basements, causing a lot of damage to boilers and so forth. The NIPD's permit, it is a federal law, we have to comply with it in Salem. But if you actually dig down, and this is my main comment, is there hasn't been enough research or data supporting a lot of the statements that were made, arguing why we should make these changes, especially from an environmental perspective? If you look at our NIPD's compliance, look at the spreadsheet, and almost every single thing that we are, have to comply with is being taken care of by a very small nonprofit in Salem, which I'm just amazed that such a small group could actually take care of all these requirements for a city of Salem. It just, I don't know, it's one thing to say, yeah, NIPD's, but it's another thing to actually look into it and understand, like, how are we complying with these requirements? The fact is, we can see with our own eyes that flooding in Salem is getting worse, and the more we build and the more we pave over, the worse it's going to get. I agree, affordable housing is an issue. I see in my neighborhood a lot of these homes that have been turned into multi-unit, being bought by absentee landlords and turned into higher rentals, and I've seen neighbors who lived across the street having, being priced out of their apartment, because that's exactly what happens. So opening this up to non-owner occupancy, it's just going to create a market pressure to increase the rents in Salem. I mean, we're seeing it now already. So, yeah, I guess that's about it. I think it needs, actually, we need to dig deeper into the data of, you know, saying, well, making these changes is really going to achieve the end goal here. I don't think there's enough that's been done to support those statements. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And then I have Lois.
Lois, we're going to try you again. Much better, Lois. If you want to give your name and your address for the record, please.
It was, somebody just read it. When they pointed out that it was my sister who, somebody had read already, but they had mine, and they reread mine after that.
Oh, Lois Ferriesso, okay.
Thank you so much.
Do you have anything else to add?
No, you guys are doing a great job tonight. And I think I may have my feelings pretty clear in the note that I wrote.
Okay. Thank you, Lois.
But, thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Any more questions from the council or the planning board? Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Morcello. Is it too late to make a comment?
No, go ahead.
No, okay, great. I just want to say that I do appreciate the many comments we've heard tonight recognizing the need for more safe, affordable rental units. I've spent many years living in apartments, and I've spent many years as a homeowner, and I've never known renters never to be detrimental to a neighborhood. And I appreciate the comments in support of having more rental units. And I was also wondering if I could ask through you to Amanda, just to confirm that whether these proposed changes go through tonight or not, that part of your presentation still applies, that based on the 70% of the fair market rent, that studios would be about $1,400, and one-bedrooms would be about $1,500, that these proposed changes don't change those markers, which are affordable?
That is correct, that those markers will not change. That's in the current ordinance and not proposed to be amended.
And that's a maximum, too. That's the maximum, right?
That's the maximum.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Watsonfeld.
Yes, my apologies. Thank you, President Morcello. I did have two questions I forgot to ask earlier, so I appreciate it. Through you to Amanda, and I'm sorry, Amanda. I had had two questions from earlier that I failed to ask. One of the questions is for the zoning table that you showed us with regards to setbacks. What are the, what are those in, like, the B1? You know, in Ward 2 specifically, we have a lot of, like, you know, pop-up houses in business districts. Myself, I own a single-family in a B1, so I would just be curious if those will be also included, just recorded somewhere, and what they would be.
The dimensional standards I showed are in the current ordinance?
Yes.
So I'm pulling up those standards now.
Yeah, I was just looking at that. So those stand regardless of the zone?
Correct, that stands.
And so, and would be, by amendment, also reduced to the five feet, no change? That's just like unilateral across?
Can you repeat that?
Sorry, that the amendment of the five-feet reduction would be across all the zones, right, just unilaterally?
Correct. So what it does is, instead of considering an accessory unit as a primary structure for setbacks, it just uses the same definition for all accessory structures, and that's across all zones.
Great, thanks for that clarification. And then the second question I had, there's language in here about being, the ability to remove the structure at a later date. Would that also stand for new detached construction? So if we were to add new detached construction, does the new detached construction also have to be able to be removed as well?
So, that's not, that's a really good comment. The ordinance requires an attached unit to be able to be structurally removed, to, you know, to be able to remove without a structural wall. So we'd have to think about how to do that with a detached unit. I would think it'd be as just reverting it back to an accessory structure, whether that's removing the oven, what is it that makes it that, a unit rather than just an accessory structure?
Thank you for that clarification, because in my mind, I'm thinking to myself, we have the foundation gets poured, the whole thing gets built, it's like, the likelihood of it ever being removed again after it's built is like, very low. Okay. And I just wanted to thank you, as other councilors have tonight, for your really thorough work and your willingness to also follow up with us on the open questions that are still outstanding, and for all your work and attention to detail. Thanks for all you do.
Any other councilors? Counselor Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you and to Amanda, I wanted to ask one final question that I have, is in regard to the proposed amendments that you proposed tonight, which I see six iron. We hear from most of the comments that were here tonight, that there are two of them that are the most concerned to many residents and to many people who speak tonight. In the event that the proposed being changed, can you go ahead and continue to propose that amendment you proposed without the two most likely, most intense one that we hear tonight, unoccupied and detached structure? Those two are the most concerning, one I feel. Can these amendments proposed by you can go without those two?
Correct. The city council can choose to just accept some amendments and not all of them. So you do not have to approve the full package. You can essentially pick and choose which ones, as long as you're, and you can make changes to it as well, as long as you're within the four corners of this advertisement. So if there are modifications you want to make, that can happen.
Thank you.
Amanda, I have one quick question, and somebody reminded me of it in their comments. In your presentation, you talked about owner occupancy, and the AARP advises against owner occupancy requirements because it makes the financing of ADUs more difficult. Can you talk about that? Because I couldn't figure out what that meant.
Right, so that's taken from the AARP's literature. It doesn't explain it, but my interpretation of that is anytime you add a restriction, particularly a tenant restriction, which is what an owner occupancy is, it requires a specific kind of tenant to live there, it makes it more challenging to finance, let's say, get a mortgage for a property when you're only allowed to have, if that property owner were to ever leave, they wouldn't be able to use that unit anymore. You following?
Well, it's, so are you talking about if an owner of a single-family creates an ADU and then sells the property, that the ADU would be a problem for financing for the second owner?
It'd be difficult for the property owner to get the mortgage in the first place to buy the home with the ADU in it, because if they ever leave, so, for example, if I'm buying a home with an accessory dwelling unit, I'm going to, let's say, use the rent from the accessory dwelling unit to help pay for my mortgage. But if I were to ever leave that unit, then you can't use that rent anymore as part.
Oh, if you keep the property, but you move yourself and you keep it as an investment property?
Right. And that wasn't, and that wasn't stated by the AARP. That was my interpretation of it. They just have the bold statement by the AARP that they recommend not have an owner occupancy, because anytime you have a restriction, it makes it more difficult with financial institutions.
Okay. Okay, that's fine, thank you. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Council President. I just have some comments, no questions. And I'll try to be concise. I just want to, number one, make sure that members of the public who are tuned into this meeting are aware that this is not the end of this discussion, right? We're holding a joint public hearing with the planning board. They will meet independently, generate a recommendation, come back to us, and this conversation will continue. So I just don't want anybody to have the impression that any of this is being decided right now, because it's not. Secondly, I wanted to correct some misinformation that I heard in a number of comments from my point of view. There's a number of people expressing concern about whether this ordinance directly addresses affordability, and I understand that many people struggle with the formulas that are used to calculate affordability because of where we live in our particular community relative to the Boston community, but it is simply a fact that there is multiple instances within this ordinance which directly address the question of affordability. It very clearly states what the maximum amount of rent is that can be charged for an ADU, and that is actually quite rare in our zoning. You will not very often find zoning ordinances relative to housing that states specifically, this is what you can charge and it has to be below the market rent. This ordinance does that. That is a fact. Now, we can argue about whether it goes far enough in supporting the most vulnerable in our community, but we cannot argue that it does nothing for affordability, because it's just not true. We had a question about subsidy versus affordability. We were asked to, you know, to be more clear about what we're considering as a council in terms of what constitutes support. I just want to make it clear for members of the public who might not be aware that subsidies for housing, which is basically direct financial support, are overwhelmingly provided by federal and state funds, right? The city of Salem is not in the business of providing direct financial support very often, unless you're talking about something that's a small program, like a first-time homebuyer program or something like that. So, as we know, the wait lists for those kinds of subsidies for state and federal funding are years long. It does very little to support our most vulnerable members in anything like a timely fashion. And when it does do that, guess who pays for that? The taxpayers, right? Very few people, I think, would be in favor of raising the taxes in our cities so that we could start providing direct housing subsidies. This is a mechanism for us to try to create opportunity for people at large where they can have self-determination, and they're not on a waiting list, and it's not costing everybody else a lot of money to do so. Finally, I just want to add that we heard a lot of comments in the direction of making sure that we're protecting our elderly, vulnerable population. I don't think anybody has any argument with the idea that we need to protect our seniors and make sure that they have a way to maintain their connection to our community as they age, perfectly happy, and it is a clear goal to want our seniors to be able to age in place. But we have other vulnerable populations in our city as well. Half of our city is renters. They are being squeezed incredibly hard. Many of them are being forced out of town because they can't afford to live here anymore. We cannot pit one vulnerable group against the other. We must take action to help our seniors and our renters and our children and our families. Everybody counts. We are here to do the work of trying to support all those people. That's why we in this room will not sit back and wait for the state or federal That's why we in this room will not sit back and wait for the state or federal government to try to solve the problems that we have here in Salem. That's not what we were elected to do. We are here to help the people that we represent. And I will end my comments there.
Thank you. And if I can just pick up on that, just to explain a little bit more about the process. If we have two options tonight, we can keep the public hearing open, or we can close it tonight. That's always the option in these situations. When the public hearing is closed, the item will go to the planning board, and like I said, they have 21 days to return their recommendation. At that point, it comes back to the city council, and we will have time to put it into one of our subcommittees and discuss it further in depth and make any amendments that we want to what was submitted, as long as we have our two votes on whatever's going to go through within 90 days of the close of this public hearing. So there is still plenty of time. We will have a committee meeting where we will take further public comment as we work through how to deal with this. Anything else from the city council? Seeing none, I'm going to throw it over to Chair Grissette to see if anyone has any comments on your end.
Thank you, President Morcello. Any planning board members with a question or comment? I see none, President Morcello. Thank you. I turn it back to you.
Thank you. Counselor Ricardi.
Thank you, Madam President. As multiple people just discussed the process and what our next steps could possibly be, I'd also point out that we've already had a committee meeting as councilors on this topic a few months ago as well. So I think we might all have a good understanding of where we, where our discussion points might lie once it comes back from planning board. So with that said, I would move that the public hearing be closed by roll call vote.
Counselor Ricardi moves that the public hearing be closed by roll call vote. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Prozniewski?
Yes.
Counselor Ricardi?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfeld?
Yes.
And Counsel President Morcello?
Yes.
On the motion that the public hearing be closed, we have 11 councilors voting, 11 in the affirmative, none in the negative, the matter carries. Counselor Ricardi.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the matter be referred to the planning board for their recommendation by roll call vote.
Counselor Ricardi moves that the matter be referred to the planning board for the recommendation by roll call vote. Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Prozniewski?
Yes.
Counselor Ricardi?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfeld?
Yes.
And Counsel President Morcello?
Yes.
On the motion that the matter be referred to the planning board for the recommendation, we have 11 councilors voting, 11 in the affirmative, none in the negative, the matter carries. At this point, I'm going to allow Chair Grissette to take care of his adjournment.
Thank you, President Morcello, and thank you for having us here this evening. We will certainly meet our obligation and get back to council as required. Elena, would you, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Any member? Is there a motion?
Don't move.
Motion been made by Helen Carroll and Tom Tied for the second. Elena, would you take a roll call vote, please, on adjournment?
Bill Grissette?
Yes.
Kurt Reader?
Yes.
Zach Counter?
Yes.
Perrell Hamilton?
Yes.
Sarah Tarbet?
Yes.
Helen Snides?
Yes.
Tom Fury?
Yes.
Jonathan Burke?
Yes.
Josh Turriel?
He said yes.
Eight of eight.
We are adjourned.
Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you, President Morcello. I move for adjournment.
Counselor McCarthy moves for adjournment. All those in favor, all those opposed, the matter carries. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Amanda, for being here. Thank you, planning board.